Right, yeah, nice to meet you.
She's starting things up. It tells you.
Did you make brownies for us or something? Did you make brownies or something for our American person? I know, you love cooking.
So if anybody's walking down the ramp.
Cameras there.
It's life, it is, isn't it?
It's delayed reaction, I wave and it's.
Okay, we're all, we're ready to call the order. Jerry, want to start?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, I hereby announce that adequate notice of this meeting was provided in a notice dated January 6th, 2021, and amended August 13th, 2021, was sent to the Asbury Park Press, the Two River Times, and posted on the bulletin board of Town Hall, filed in the clerk's office, and posted on the township's website, www.homedelltownship.com.
Welcome to this first live in-person meeting of the Homedale Zoning Board in a year and a half now. Roll call, please.
Ms. Abern, here. Mr. Flumetol?
Here.
Mr. Bupolino?
Here.
Ms. Campus? Mr. Hearn?
Here.
Mr. Fantaopoulos?
Here.
Mr. Keshi?
Here.
Ms. Calor?
Yeah.
And Ms. Silatine.
I'd like to seat Ms. Calor for the absence, Campus, for all matters on tonight's agenda. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance and follow it, continue, stay standing for a few moments of silence in recognition of the troops and military who serve us around the world and our first responders, and especially tonight, in recognition of Renee Francine Campus', husband, who died suddenly on Monday. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the middle of the world. Thank you. First two items we have are a couple of resolutions. The first one, consistent with the MLUL, where we've had a resolution at the beginning of the year describing the meeting format this year that was by Zoom. We are now starting again with in-person meetings, although the resolution has some caveats in it because none of us know how this COVID-19 virus is going to evolve. Recently, unfortunately, it's been serious, so we'll have more serious with more cases. So we'll have to consider things going forward on a, potentially a case-by-case basis. And anyway, we have a resolution as prepared that certainly at least covers tonight that we are in person. Do you have a motion to approve this resolution?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The second one is a resolution appointing the board engineer, Mr. Robert Bucko. Bob has changed firms, and hence we need a new resolution confirming that he will continue to be our engineer, together with his new firm. Do you have a motion to approve that resolution?
I will make the motion gladly to approve keeping Robert Bucko as our board engineer.
I'll second it.
Jerry.
I don't even recognize the voices anymore.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Both resolutions carry. Then going in the next item, the public hearing. Jerry, want to read the titles?
Item number three, 14 Wildhedge Lane, Christopher and Amy Hooper, Lot 15.04, Lot 7, in the R40A Zone. Applicant seeks relief to replace a pre-existing non-conforming front porch that is 45.79 feet from the Wildhedge Lane property line, where 50 feet is required.
Are you Mr. Hooper?
Aye.
Okay, are you going to have any professionals or attorneys or anyone representing you, or are you just going to be, just going to be you? Okay, well, we start, you're on. Please describe your situation, what you need from the board.
Loretta, everything's in order, notices, everything. So before you start, if you raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the whole truth, the truth to help you God?
I do.
Just spell your name for the record.
Marty, you have to press the button, otherwise you're not allowed. Turn the switch on the bottom. And you got to see a red light. If you don't see a red light, it's not working.
I was off.
You might want to use the mic, it picks it up so that.
Is there a red light?
Turn, turn it over.
Okay.
Because the, the meeting is livestreamed and it is recorded.
Okay, great. So my wife and I live at 14 Wildhedge Lane with my son. We have an existing front porch that unbeknownst to us was built, non-conforming. What we're looking to do is just renovate the, the outside of the house, and part of that renovation is to take the existing porch and replace it with a new porch. It's going to come out exactly the same distance from the house the current porch is. The only difference is it's a little bit longer than the current porch. Not sure what else is, everything is in order. It's 45.79 feet, so we're talking about a four and a half foot variance from Wildhedge Lane. We live on a pretty isolated street. It's around the back, so if you don't live back there, you typically don't see any cars come back there. I'm sure some people don't know where Wildhedge Lane is, on the wrong side of 34. Exactly, right behind Casola. So it's pretty isolated in the neighborhood. There are several of these types of porches where you can eyeball it and know it's not 50 feet from Wildhedge Lane. So I didn't think I need to take pictures and bring in people's houses, but, so hopefully the board will find all the paperwork in order and, you know, it's not a safety hazard and you'll see that the plans are all drawn up and by a professional engineer, stamped and certified, so hopefully the board will approve this variance for us.
The relief that you're looking for is obviously for the setback for the front of the porch, not the side that you're making wider.
That's correct. That's correct. It's, it's on a, the road is on a curve, so on one part of the porch, it does conform. On the narrow part of the porch, it doesn't, so.
So you're referring to just the portico over the front door as a porch? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And you're going to extend that to cover both picture windows on the house?
That's correct.
All right, that would be a real porch then.
Yeah, that would be a real porch.
Okay.
The reason we do that is so it can be in line with the site part of the porch? What's the reason to do that?
So we'd like to have a front porch. Our son and his friends like to play on the front lawn, so it'd be nice to be able to sit out there and watch, rather than, you know, not having a place to. It's, it's not big enough. Like the gentleman said, it's not, it's not really, it's a, it's like a landing with a couple of steps and there's an overhang on it. So essentially what we're doing is making an actual porch where you can sit down.
How big will the porch be after the renovation?
Again, it's going to be the same distance the current steps are from the front. It's just going to be the length of the front of the house. It's not going to extend, if you look at the plans, it's not going to extend to the garage portion. It's going to be the, cover both picture windows essentially.
Any other, board members have any other questions for the applicant?
Just one more from me. I noticed, I did drive by the house, so I did notice you were doing some excavation in the backyard.
Oh, yes, yes. So we had some backyard work, some landscaping work. They're just putting in, they're replacing, it was a deck that was falling apart, so they replaced it with some pavers.
Okay, you have a conservation easement based on what I saw on the plans.
Absolutely, yes.
So you're not touching that, right?
Nope, absolutely not.
Okay.
Nope, nope. I'm maintaining it, but I'm not allowed to do anything with it.
Kate and Bob are planner and engineer. Do either of you have any questions for the applicant?
No, Mr. Chairman, this is, you know, very simple. There's real no engineering issues associated with this application as far as drainage, grading, and like, so we didn't even do a review on it.
Kate?
Yeah, same, same from my perspective. I also didn't do a review, but I did take a look at some of the neighboring properties, and this is a, you know, it is isolated as the applicant said, and this type of front porch is not out of character with many of the surrounding community, many surrounding houses.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant the variance for the applicant.
Second.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Well, yeah, before we finalize it, two things. One, I'll just ask the applicant, consistent with the municipal land use law that governs how we make decisions, are you aware of any negative impact this might have on the neighborhood or any of the neighbors?
I am not aware of any negative impact that would have.
And it would be beneficial to you and your family and hence be, and is, as the planner testified, appropriate for the neighborhood?
It will be beneficial for my family and appropriate for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this application, ask a question or comment? I see no one, so we'll close the public portion. We do have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Abern, here. Mr. Bupolino?
Yes.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. Keshi?
Yes.
Mr. Fantaopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Flumetol?
Yes.
You're all set.
Thanks very much, appreciate your time.
So, you know, when, the process is that our attorney will prepare a formal resolution, which you probably get presented to the board at one of the September meetings. That will get formally adopted, then there's a notice period that goes with that, and after that, you can get the permits that you need to proceed. You just be in contact with Loretta, she'll let you know exactly where things stand.
Great, thank you very much.
That was even simpler than I thought.
I think it's a positive thing for a neighborhood to have a convenience store, especially when you're going to have all these people living there, they can walk in and get milk and stuff. Don't tell me you never had times when you needed something there to run to somewhere and drive all the way there.
Yeah, plus you can't all open them up. You just have them on the roof.
All right.
They just walk, go into that other stuff? I don't know why we can't.
Oh, they'll walk from there. Yeah, that's what we did. Do you recognize any of the people?
That's the first one, a reporter. She was a reporter before you got in.
I don't recognize.
Like a physical reporter, does she have any stuff she's bringing? This is the reporter for.
Oh, here she is. Yeah, I'm sorry, so we haven't.
Oh, oh, okay. So we should start that way, just go through all the exhibits from back to February and then all up.
And matter of fact, the guy in the back, he's got to be.
Pass the chair.
Could be.
So what do you think?
It's not going forward.
No. I reckon. Yeah, but that's not anywhere in my system.
Yeah, well, Bonnie's confirmed that they have to go back to the front of the. Because it's improvised.
Okay. Jerry, you want to read the notice of this next item four on our agenda?
New Horizon Properties LLC, 494 Middle Road, preliminary slash final site plan, number 2019-3, Lot 56, Lot 1. Applicant proposes to develop the property as a convenience store with a fuel service facility. Property presently consists of a one-story masonry building slash garage. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing structure on the property and construct a 3,000-square-foot convenience store in a fueling area consisting of six fuel pumps.
This is a continued public hearing of an application we've been considering from earlier this year. Mr. Pape, you're representing the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to bring us up to date and continue your presentations?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals. My name is Kenneth Pape. I am with the firm of High Auburn Pape, and this is a continued hearing. It has been my responsibility and my privilege to represent your applicant before this board. We began in February, and we had a meaningful presentation in February. The board continued us to May, and we had a significant presentation to you during the month of May. The witnesses who have testified so far are all available, and I'm going to, with your permission, ask for permission to have a couple of them come back and just do a Reader's Digest thumbnail version of the highlights of their testimony. But the, Michael Pucci is the professional engineer responsible for the plans, and I think that his emphasis was on the introduction of a modern stormwater system where there wasn't one, introducing of landscape areas where there were, were none, the creation of onsite circulation and reduction in driveways, and the general improvements to the site. The testimony of Mr. Silva, the environmental scientist, was with regard to the environmental encroachments that exist. We have flood hazards on site, and we have wetlands and buffers on site, and there are improvements that were built over the years that are deeply into those environmentally sensitive areas. He identified them and indicated that, how they would be removed, and also that the wetland and stream corridor would be restored and revegetated and naturalized, so that the animal corridor would be restored. We also had Mr. Ray go through the traffic elements of the project, the driveway system and the onsite circulation. And we had, we had the architecture that was presented to the board, which we were, which we thought was an exemplary architecture, we learned and we respected very much that it was not architecture that belonged in Homedale. Your comments were strong and your guidance was very clear. And you'll hear tonight, Michael Testa has a building that is very different. It is a residential-style building, and I'm not going to ask that he revisit that which he previously presented, but he presented that new building to you. And we, because we are a, a use variance, the, the service station is a permitted use, but the convenience is not a listed permitted use. Deli is, but not convenience. We're, we're a use variance, and that's why we are before you. And the most important witness is our final witness, who will listen to all of the facts that were placed before you and bring them into a summary to justify the granting of the relief that we're requesting, and that's Christine Cuffone. So, Mr. Chair, with your permission and without delay, I'll ask to call Mr. Pucci. Under oath, remind him.
Well, I would suggest, Mr. Pape and for our prepared, we should probably just, since we're here in person, let's get everybody just, including our own professionals, let's swear everybody in, in person. And after that, then I have another, just quick clarification comment. So if everyone wants to just stand and, including our professionals, raise your right hand. So everyone wants to swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God? Okay, and then I guess when they come up, Mr., when you have them testify, they can just spell their name for the record and.
Okay. We're going to. We're going to recap. We're doing well now?
No, we'll do that one at a time.
Oh, okay. I got it. Very fine.
It's too cumbersome, whatever, go to here.
Very fine.
So, Loretta, everything's still in order and escrosed and everything. So there was one, at some point in this process of this year, one of our board members has, was part of an LLC that had an application here that utilized Ms. Cuffone. He was not part of the hearing because of his position here. He and I spoke about it. My opinion to him was I don't think he has a conflict. He didn't think he had a conflict, but if you think he has a conflict, I want to bring that to your attention, and he will recuse himself.
So Ms. Cuffone, as a professional planner.
Yes.
Provided planning testimony on behalf of a board member.
Of an LLC.
Of an LLC, which a board member was an owner.
Correct.
And, and that board member recused himself.
He's here now, he's been part of the hearing.
There's no conflict.
All along. I just want to bring that to your attention and let you give a comment if you think you have one.
I appreciate the disclosure.
And to the board, by the way.
And I just want to ask, I want to ask two other people if they feel there's any conflict. I want to ask Christine, and I want to ask Mr. Bruce Olaskin, if I may, just for one sec.
That's fine.
Do you feel that you have any conflict?
I absolutely do not.
I wanted to hear, I didn't think so, but I wanted to hear it and make it part of the. Your applicant's representative and the planner, having, with that disclosure, I appreciate the disclosure, I don't see it as a conflict. Ms. Cuffone is going to render a professional planner's opinion, and you're going to evaluate it. I do not see it as a conflict.
And just as a reminder, at the beginning on Zoom, Jerry also knew the applicant, I believe, or not, not as, well, you can describe it, not as friends, but as he just knows him. We determined that was not a conflict, but now that we're in person again, I'm repeating that and just make sure that no one feels there's a conflict between Jerry and the applicant.
I've met with him when I was working, I'm retired four years, I was a banker, and I looked at financing some of his projects. We didn't, but I still had discussions with him, so that's the extent of it.
Appreciate, really do appreciate the disclosure, but I don't see any conflict there.
Thank you.
So, okay, thank you. I think it's far better to be open about these things than have something come to bite when, down the road. I, we have a court reporter with us this evening. We found, the court reporter prepared the transcript of the May hearing for us, which was helpful in our preparing, and we've asked that she prepare a transcript. Any transcripts prepared will be provided to this board. That was helpful, thank you. So with that, Mr. Pucci, qualifications as a professional engineer are part of the record. May we begin at that point? And then we'll just ask Mr. Pucci to, to spell his name, remind him that he's under oath and go to work.
Good evening. Michael Pucci, P-U-C-C-I.
Mr. Pucci, we remind you that you're sworn and under oath. I'm going to ask if you would introduce the exhibits upon which you intend to rely, and if you could give us a highlight version of the improvements to the site from an engineer's perspective.
Thank you.
One other minor bookkeeping matter, since these are live exhibits, we want to appropriately record them, as, because what we had previously been done with share screens on Zoom. And some of these may have been updated since. How about I put today's date and then at whatever the title block is, where should I begin?
I would just, let's pick a number that's far enough out, you know, whether it's 50, A50, or whatever. We'll just, for the record, there's clearly going to be a gap between what was posted online and tonight's exhibits, just to make sure we don't overlap.
Five zero.
We'll have today's date as well, yeah. That's, if the.
That's fine.
The board's okay with that.
Sounds good. 8/18/21. This first one will be A50. Please read the title block.
The title block actually reads concept plan, but I will refer to this as a comparison plan. And I say that because this is the same exhibit that was presented online as A1 back in February, and known as a comparison plan at that point. And what you have on this comparison plan is the existing conditions on the left and the proposed conditions on the right. On the right, the proposed conditions were as of the initial start of the application. And as your board chair just noted, there have been some changes, very minor insignificant changes that, from the visual perspective above the ground, but I will describe them to you. So just as an overview to bring you back to where we started from or where we're at, as Mr. Pape said, Lot 1, Lot 56, just, just under an acre or so, one existing building surrounded by pavement and gravel, and as he noted, much of the back of the property is disturbance within a wetland and a flood hazard area buffer, riparian buffer. The proposal is to remove all of the movements upon the site and replace them with one building in the back, 3,000 square feet, a convenience store, and a gas canopy with six docks and gas loading stations in the front. What will happen is currently we have about 65 feet of opening along Middle Road and about 55 feet of opening along Laurel Avenue to access the existing improvements on the site. That will be closed down to have a 30-foot opening, more justified to the north on Laurel, more justified to the east on Middle, separating them from the intersection to provide as much of a separation and safety factor for inbound and outbound movements and any conflicts with the intersection. What you see on the left is that there are a couple of trees on the left-hand side of the site, just to the, behind the building and just to the left, on towards the Laurel Avenue side. And much of the site, up to the property boundary, is devoid of any vegetation. It's mostly gravel in the back. The proposal is to revegetate the area in the back, which happens to be in a wetland buffer and in a riparian corridor. So we're taking an existing encroachment into a natural preservation area, and we have a permit from DEP to revegetate that area and put a substantial landscape buffer to the north. In addition, on the east side, there are some individually trees that were located, and we propose to supplement that with more landscaping along the east side, towards our east neighbor. Finally, there is absolutely nothing in, in front at the intersection of, in terms of a buffer, any vegetation, and as you can see under the proposed plan, an extensive amount of buffering in the front to shield the view of the facility from the road, as far as.
Just a question, seeing that, presumably that landscaping is consistent with site, eh, need, site triangles?
That is correct, plus this is a, a signalized intersection. From a stormwater management perspective, as Mr. Pape kind of alluded to, what happens today, everything just sort of sheets off over, whatever oils and petrochemicals fall on the pavement and our grass and our gravel in the back, they just wash into the stream. What will happen in the future is that everything will be collected in an onsite stormwater management system, go through a filtration system, and then into a storage system, and discharge into the stream, providing reductions in flows, even though it's a, at the time, under the regulations that existed, it did not need stormwater management because it was a minor project, increase in pervert surface. It still has it, so it is a benefit to the environment to clean up any water that runs off of the site and make sure that it is attenuated for quality and quantity. Recharge did not have to be addressed because the existing conditions on site do not support recharge, nor do the proposed. That's sort of a total overview of the site as it was up to the May 5th, was it, hearing, I believe?
Yes.
The site triangle idea for a second, really, are those going to be extremely low, because even though it's a signalized intersection, it's a right turn on red, so I'm concerned about blocking.
Yes, you do have shrubbery along here that will be low. What you have are, the street trees required at the 50-foot spacing. The street trees are, of course, branched up high, and all you have is the stem of the tree.
And they're the full, they are the full site triangles as required, they're not reduced in size.
And a site triangle, as, if need be, the traffic engineer will testify to, but it's measured from the driver's eye, 14 and a half feet thereabouts, behind the stop line, and then the appropriate multiplication, 10 times the speed limit in the opposite direction on the street. The driver's eye, presumably when you're stopping at a right turn on red, you must stop before you make the right turn on red. We all know that doesn't really happen, but it is in fact the law.
You're, with regard to the stormwater situation, the, the new regs that were not yet in effect.
That is correct.
For this application, but you're implying, or you indicated that you're doing more than was required under the old regs. Do you meet the requirements of the new regs or not quite?
I would say not quite, because we would then have to apply to DEP for a waiver to allow the manufactured treatment device, the filtration system that is here. That is not a. That is not a standard today. They prefer green infrastructure as opposed to manufactured treatment for water quality improvements, but it was certainly allowed and industry standard up until March 2nd of this year.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, the testimony that we offered earlier about the drainage system, as just described by Michael, is that it does comply with your municipal standards, it does comply with the applicable DEP standards, it's a private system and no burden on the municipality. The owner is fully responsible for its maintenance and that maintenance is identified in an operations manual that's registered with you.
All right.
I would like you to take one minute. Since the last time we were here to testify, or the last time we testified, I know that your office successfully secured a missing permit. And I know that one of the conversation topics in May was a demonstration that the way that you designed the landscape area behind this building was going to be, had to be consistent with a flood hazard determination issued by the DEP. You've provided me with a copy of that. I'm going to share this with the board so it becomes a part of the record, but on March 30th, 2021, a flood hazard area verification approval letter was issued. I have a single question for you, Mr. Pucci. Is this approval that you received from the DEP for this project and your design consistent?
Absolutely consistent.
Thank you. To whom? Loretta, Loretta? So I guess that's A-51. Would that be A-51?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So A-51 is the flood hazard determination. That was the only permit that we had outstanding.
Just a bit of, I guess, minor housekeeping. At the time of the hearing in May, there were two comments in Mr. Bucko's review letter that we had agreed to address, and there was one subsequent change made. The comments that we agreed to address dealt with the substitution. Four of the trees in this newly enhanced buffer that we're providing along the northern eastern side of the property dealt with, I believe it was a red ash, subject to infestation by the ash-bore beetle. And Mr. Bucko and I had a conversation prior to that meeting, and I did testify that evening on Zoom, I guess, that we would substitute a pin oak for the ash, and I believe that was acceptable to Mr. Bucko.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And the other item in Mr. Bucko's letter concerns, we just discussed, flood hazard area verification. Now, subsequent to that time, and I guess I should mark this as A-52?
Two.
Okay.
I'll do it. You keep talking.
A-52 is nothing more than the same exact view you see on the right-hand side of A-50. All I did was put it on one large sheet. This actually is the site plan from the plans that were initially filed on the application. That same site plan or proposed view that we talked about on the comparison view, I've just blown it up to the full-size scale on the initial sheet that it came with. And what happened was the landscaping at that time was superimposed upon that plan. And I also will bring to you A-53, which is the current version of the landscaping plan. Now, A-53, I bring this to you to show you the one minor difference or tweak that we have added as a result of conversations with the applicant subsequent to the hearing on May 5th. And I apologize for, the graphic differential between the two is simply because one's the landscaping plan and one's the site plan, so the pipes aren't so evident. But off to the east side of the site, we have the trash enclosure behind the building to the right and the loading zone in front of that. Right in this corner, you can see, and I say in the corner, it's the southerly end of the loading zone at the easterly curb line of the proposed project, because the record can't look at my picture. And there is a little bit of shading here that is tan colored. We're proposing three by eight concrete pad there that will be set back from the curb line, two and a half feet, so five and a half feet by eight feet, concrete pad. On that three by eight portion on the backside will be a caged propane exchange area. There are two dots in the front, right behind the curb. Those dots represent bollards to make sure that no one could ever drive over the curb, should they ever try to drive in that direction anyway, and then hit the propane exchange area. And you can see on the older plan, that did not exist. It was simply grass. So the change is to propose a concrete, oh, excuse me, a concrete pad with a propane exchange area, not filling, not replenishment, just an exchange of tanks.
And I believe, Mr. Pucci, those were the outstanding, that was your summary and the outstanding commitments that the applicant had made to the boards.
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, just, just one question for Mr. Pucci. That does not affect the lot coverage, does it?
That is correct. The area of that is so insignificant, it did not make a difference.
Okay. You beat me. Good. So that you stay under the allowed and you not, still do not need a coverage variance?
That is correct. And one of the things that, I guess, the very bird's eye overview, in the initial presentation of May, I had affirmed that plans were filed in March, I believe, the 22nd, responsive to a prior review memo from Mr. Bucko and discussed at the initial February hearing. And that responsive review did make changes to the site plan to bring the proposed coverage, even though the existing coverage was in the 70s, proposed with 61.9 or 61.7, something along that. Changes were made to get it down to 59.9, under the allowable 60. And this little bit of concrete here does not take it over that 60%. We are still compliant.
Okay. Now, while we're pointing at the same part of that drawing, I believe there was a, to my mind, I'll call it an open question about the nature of the trash area, as to whether that was fenced or whether it was concrete block. I believe Kate had a question about that, and I don't know if that got resolved.
I think that we agreed that it would be a masonry enclosure.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, yes, that was our recommendation was that.
And you did agree to that?
We did.
And so do the current revised plans show that?
I believe even the prior ones, the ones that were filed, as I just mentioned in March.
Okay. So that's items that have been dealt with, enclosed.
I have nothing further on directive, Mr. Pucci. He's available to you at this point.
I have a question, comment.
Okay.
You may, I don't know if you have available, but do you have available sheet five of 15?
Yeah, I have small ones.
So you may mark it as exhibit. So while, while you're getting that ready, I'll start with some general things and then we'll get to what I, my question is. As you know, that's a pretty dense area with a lot of residents that live very close by. So I'm thinking in my mind that a lot of people may not drive there, may walk there. I'm also aware that there are building, buildings, townhouses or apartments right across the street, 60 units, more people there that possibly could walk.
Fifty.
Fifty units. And then there also is some other townhouses a little further west down the road. So there's, there's a possibility that a lot of people may walk there to pick up convenient items. So I started looking at the plan and thinking, how would the people walk to the site? So on sheet five of 15, you have at the intersection of Middle Road and Laurel Avenue, indications of where a crosswalk is, where people will cross the street.
Right here.
So they all end up at the corner, I don't have a laser to point, but put your finger up a little higher, of your property, right there.
Okay.
So now the people come there. So now they have to go to convenience store. How do you think they will walk to that convenience store?
I think they will either follow the sidewalk to the driveway and walk in, or follow the sidewalk to the driveway and walk in.
Okay, now, let's take the logic out of it and take human nature. How many people are going to cut right across that corner?
They may cut right across the corner.
So what I'm, I'm suggesting is a small sidewalk to go from that crosswalk right across so people can walk.
Right here.
Cut right across there without walking through your landscaping to get, to walk all the way around the other end. The other, the other thing that has to do with this is if they are walking there, they're walking by driveways where people will be coming in and out. So I'm thinking if there's any way that we could put some crosshairs or walkways that are dashed along the side, the edge of the curbing of the driveway where they could kind of walk and find their way to the building, whether they come in from that point diagonally or if they even walk in off of Middle Road exit. In other words, I'm, I want it to be pedestrian-friendly access because I don't think it's a good idea for people to be walking at the same place where people are pulling in with their cars. So that's all I'm trying to, and before we go further, because that obviously is going to increase your coverage if I'm proposing sidewalks, okay? And that's why I brought it up at this point. So in a strict, the purpose of it is safety for pedestrians. I think there'll be plenty of them that'll be walking there from all of the various close by future developments, and it's something for you guys to talk about. I don't know if my engineer has a comment on that.
I want to hear his engineer first.
I have an idea to change it that I think would be beneficial, so let's hear Mr. Bucko.
Well, that, that's my opinion, is that the, for these, pedestrian safety, and, and Dimitri is correct, human nature would be that they won't walk up the street and go in or walk down and go in. They're going to cut right across. So they're either going to do it with a nice sidewalk or even we can use the structural pavement that, that, you know, really won't increase the impervious coverage because it has the ability for growth through it, but it does identify a walkway. So maybe we can look into that as opposed to a concrete which could possibly bring you over the lot coverage.
Correct.
So, I mean, to find something that would be structurally and identifiably pathway from that intersection that won't increase the lot coverage. And I know there's materials out there.
I don't know whether or not your audience specifically would call out permeable pavers as impervious or pervious, but we could use or explore permeable pavers. I would also suggest that perhaps not only in this location between the low shrubs and move those apart a little bit, but it might be prudent to put another piece of sidewalk off here, and I'll go back to sheet five as you described, simply because if I were to put it in an area such as here, avoiding obviously the tree, I'm having a direct connection towards the pedestrian connection and I could even stripe a crosswalk across the driveway here, as opposed to people walking in and now they're going to walk past all, all this pavement and cars coming and going at the fueling stations. Now, we know that that would be a convenient thing, and I'm not suggesting not to do this. I'm suggesting perhaps two locations, one more defined directly to the sidewalk in front of the building and a crosswalk out to the site sidewalk, and then the other one to allow them to not disturb the vegetation when they take the shortcut on human nature path.
I'm just thinking of what's around the surrounding and where people would be coming from. Right behind your property is a nursing home, so employees might want to come there and grab a sandwich. So they're going to come walking down the sidewalk and come right in. The development that I spoke to you about is going to go diagonally from Middle Road to Laurel. Some people may come from the top of Laurel and walk down that direction. So you're going to have people that are walking from different ways to access that property.
I'm agreeing with you and I'm adding to what you're suggesting.
Putting the crosswalk that you set across there is great. What about on, on the east side of the property? Do you want to do anything on that side?
Well, anyone coming to the east would be at the driveway before they'd get into any of...
Right, so they're going to walk down the driveway? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we could explore putting a sidewalk adjacent to the curb line here, but I guarantee that's going to throw us over the coverage.
Well, why can't we use the same material?
If we're, if Mr. Bucko and I can agree that we would use permeable pavers instead of concrete for that additional sidewalk in this area, we'll certainly shift the...
Up to the propane area and then they walk across.
Shift the propane down a little bit to make it more pedestrian-friendly so they can get down into this area and then come across the loading zone where there will not be cars other than when someone's emptying their truck.
That's all I'm suggesting, pedestrian safety.
I turned to Mr. Bruce Olaski, who gave me the signal that these are all acceptable. Could we quantify them? I think we just talked about a lot and I can make sure that we know what we just agreed to.
All right, well, we, I'll summarize what I think we agreed to, is on the east side, if they come down Middle Road, that you're going to, we're going to do the, you know, the permeable pavers.
Right behind the car.
All the way up to the...
The loading zone.
Propane or the loading zone, and then have them come across that way. Then we're going to come down to the intersection where they come across Middle Road and then right there at the bend, again, permeable pavers, so they don't really destroy the landscaping. And then coming up Laurel Avenue, just before the driveway entrance, correct? And then right in there, and then stripe the parking lot as a pedestrian walk.
A crosswalk to the striping that designates the parking spaces.
Correct. That, that's my understanding.
I think that make your store more pedestrian-friendly.
And, and I agree with that.
All acceptable and subject to Mr. Bucko's final approval. I am amusingly struck by this in that, I don't know, 15 or 20 years ago, and it was on the planning board, the bank across the street came in for its approval. The exact same thing happened. There was no walkway from the corner to the bank. And so there were some provisions made to safely let pedestrians from the neighborhood walk into the bank. Take a look at what's across the street. I don't remember at this point exactly how it was done, but again, there was, the sidewalk went this way and not that way.
So I would suggest for the record or that when, if this comes to a vote this evening, that, that condition, obviously we made a condition, but if it's, works out when you do your calculations with Mr. Bucko that you're over coverage, I'm suggesting we probably, at an abundance of caution, include a possible variance for the increase in coverage, again, subject to Mr. Bucko's, you know...
I think we're all in agreement on our safety purposes to do that.
And we published for that, Mr. Food Council.
Correct, yes. Go ahead.
I was going to ask you, all these walkways will have some curb cuts in ADA areas? Is that required?
Yes. It would not be required, but I would leave that up to the board's pleasure whether or not.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Access to the site, I was just asking, you know, to see what was required.
Yeah, you only need to drop it down in a couple, in three spots, basically.
Well, currently the plan does provide for that right now at the crossings of the driveways. And the front is fully accessible with the handicap spaces in the front of the building.
No, I think, I think what you're saying is when you come, if you walk across there, you're not coming down a curb on the, on the, off of the sidewalk. It's a ramp, handicap ramp.
Well, yeah, you're up to, you're on the sidewalk.
Well, that's on the sidewalk level, but then you're going to go to the driveway level.
Correct. And if you would like a depression, a ramp down there.
That should be cut going down. Yeah. And, and also by the loading dock and also on the Laurel Avenue side.
Okay. So the three points where the new sidewalk will touch?
The driveway level.
Correct.
Bottom line is make it all safe.
Okay.
They can go there with a stroller if they want.
Yeah, you can do that.
The shrubs that you want to have along the corner, are you doing that for our benefit or for appeal at the neighborhood technical place or more suburban? The reason I bring it up is that if we don't have the shrubs, we would have no room.
Well, the shrubs can be spaced far enough apart right at that corner. We obviously don't have a tree right in the corner. They're spread back and there's some shrubs as info, so we can spread them apart to make sure that you can still, well, actually...
The answer is, it's an aesthetic improvement thing. We believe it.
And, and there's ample spacing to put it safely between the landscaping.
And to the extent that the shrubbery has to move, it will, when it's installed.
And it'll all be ADA compliant?
It should be.
That would be A-54?
Yep, 54.
A-54 would be sheet five.
And that's sheet five of the set. That's sheet five of the set.
Correct.
That's it, that's been part of the application. It doesn't have to be marked.
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have nothing further of Mr. Pucci, and I was prepared to bring Mr. Silva unless there's further questions, but from the board, it's a question. Great. Does anyone have any further questions at this moment for the, of this witness?
No, Mr. Chairman, just quickly, because you had mentioned the storm drainage system. This application is considered a minor development by DEP under the new rules and regulations. So they really weren't subject to all of those new regulations. I just wanted to put that on, so I mean, that would hopefully clear that up for you.
So I do have a question about the detention basin. So that wasn't a requirement by any kind of state mandate, right?
The detention was, but it wasn't subject to the new stormwater regulations that just came out in March.
Okay.
But he did, but he did attenuate and did the water quality and addressed the quantity in accordance with the borough, with the township's stormwater regulations and rules.
So I did breeze through the maintenance manual for that.
Okay.
And it seems like there's a lot of attention that has to be paid to that system to make sure it's maintained satisfactorily. How is that done? Is there any oversight over that by any entity other than the company?
It's recorded, the operations agreement is recorded so that it follows the property and it's a condition of approval. It's a continuing condition of approval. The applicant has an obligation to do it. The oversight would only be from the municipality if they found that it was not operating. You'd have the power to enforce it.
How would we know, is my question.
Somebody would complain.
Bob.
Or we would notice and that would be brought to the township's attention or, you know, the board, and probably not Bob, probably the township engineer. They'd go out and look and yeah, if it was not working, they could issue a violation notice to the property owner.
The other way to evaluate that is that the township has a stormwater management plan and they have to inspect all the outfalls that go into creeks, streams on, for all drainage, not just from detention basins. So what they do is they, they can test that. And if there's any, you know, foreign material or there's any readings over and above what DEP is required, then they can, they can notice the property owner. Okay, but any, any outfall that goes into a creek has to be monitored by the township under the stormwater management.
So somebody from our town will be checking on this?
Yes, yes.
That's the answer?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they have to, they have to submit reports every year.
Now, Mr. Pate, now since we're live, we're doing things possibly a little different. We have often in the past at the conclusion of a particular witness asked for public questions to get them move that along. We didn't do that with the Zoom, but we can tonight if you're agreeable.
It's your hearing.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there any members of the public who would have question about the testimony that's been given by this witness? Seeing none?
Continue.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Pucci. Mr. Silva, if you could join us. Mr. Silva was qualified as an environmental scientist. His credentials are part of the record sworn. If you could begin by spelling your name for the board.
Yes, Anthony Silva, S.I.L.V.A.
And Mr. Silva was sworn. I remind you that you're under oath and I'm, and I ask if you could give us, if you wish to use the exhibit, but if you could just give us an overview of the environmental issues on the site and the environmental issues that are resolved by the applicant's proposed development plan.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Pucci for his testimony. He covered the environmental benefits very well of this project. The existing conditions in the rear of the site in environmentally sensitive areas are compromised by impervious surfaces, gravels, there's environmental encroachments. This site plan proposes to enhance those areas. We received all state verifications and approvals. This site plan respects the flood hazard area and the 50-foot riparian zone buffer. We received a transitionary waiver for redevelopment in a wetland transition area. So only 58 square feet of the rear of the building is in, being constructed in wetland transition area, whereas nearly 5,500 square feet is going to be reforested to a natural state. That in turn provides what we like to call wildlife migration corridors. So this is contiguous with forest off-site to the east, which provides for wildlife habitat. That in combination with the water quality treatment that's going to occur, those two standards alone pretty much meet the intent of the stream corridor ordinance. Overall, it's a net environmental benefit and conditions are going to be drastically improved. Currently, there's automobiles and disrepair on the property, so you know, oil leaks, that all directly goes into the creek tributary as it currently exists. This site plan proposes improvements to all those features.
Thank you for the summary. I thought it was important just to remind the boards of all of those commitments that were made and those improvements. And since we last saw you, we got the last of, our engineers successfully got the last of the DEP permits. So all the commitments we've made are now permitted by the state. I have nothing further of Mr. Silva. He is available for examination.
Yeah, I have a question. Bob, in your last summary or your last overview of the project, you mentioned needing documents from the LSRP regarding the monitoring wells. Have we seen anything like that?
I have not, no.
So were monitoring wells on the property? I'm still interested to know what they were monitoring.
If I may, I do remember that comment and after the last live meeting, I did go back into my environmental impact statement and I did not recall citing any monitoring wells on the property.
I read them.
I mean, if you can point me to the page, I'll gladly, I got the report with.
I'd have to dig it out, but I did read through your information that there were, there were monitoring wells actually removed. So that tells me there's either a no further action letter or the LSRP has signed off on it, right?
Underground storage tanks were removed in the 70s, but as far as monitoring wells, there was no monitoring wells on site that we discovered in our research.
That's what I thought.
Well, I, I know I read it, so.
I'd be happy to, if you can quote cite the page and paragraph, I'd.
I can help you, yeah. The monitoring wells were associated with contamination that was across the street. There were, there was contamination from a shopping center across the street and the monitoring wells were measuring the extent of the plume. So when that contamination was cured, the, all the wells were removed.
Do you recall what kind of contamination it was?
I do not. I can get it for you because there's a record of it from across the street.
So there were monitoring wells on the property?
There were monitoring wells on the property that were removed when that program was complete.
Thank you.
And I'll get it for you, that's sure.
I'm just, I'm wondering where, that shopping center across the street hasn't had, has material.
If you go back 40-plus years.
I'm telling you, I remember from a kid with that shopping center. I'm not, I'm never going to say, oh, man. It's old, we'll go there, okay? There wasn't anything else there. That keeps already in that damn city, that location's been there probably.
There was a laundromat that was part of that shopping center.
Yeah.
And that was the source of the contamination.
And like Osper's.
I can get it for you. It's a record.
It can be big contamination sources. It can be huge. The chemicals they use.
And I'm sure that it's your parents who told you all about this, not you. All right, I want to just clarify in lay language perhaps something that you just said. There are for wetlands, floodland, all of these, all kinds of buffer requirements. And the intent is to keep bad stuff out of the streams. And you know, sometimes it's 50 feet, sometimes it's 100. If it's a C1, it becomes 300 and the like. And now here, some of the buffers you're providing are a little less than some ordinances may specify. But if I understand what you're saying is that because of all the revegetation that's being done and the removal of bad impervious coverage, the net result will be significantly better and will meet the intent of those requirements and hence you've gotten all the okays from DEP, et cetera. Am I correctly characterizing what you're saying?
That is accurate, that is accurate. The local ordinance is greater than the state buffer width. But with what's existing today versus what's proposed and all the net environmental benefits, inherently we meet the intent and of the objectives and goals of the stream corridor ordinance.
Good, thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions for Silva?
Mr. Chairman, just to.
Go ahead, Bob.
Jerry's comment about the monitoring wells, we did identify that, but they did provide documents from the LSRP. They did. And it was in accordance with all appropriate NJDEP regulations and requirements.
All right, perfect, thank you.
They did do that.
Thank you.
In that case, let me just raise the question, is there anyone from the public who has any questions about this witness and the testimony he's given? Seeing none? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Silva. Mr. Testa, our architect, ask if that he join us? Michael Testa is our architect, his credentials are part of the record. He has been sworn. Would you spell your name on the record?
Sure, Testa, T.E.S.T.A.
Mr. Testa, I remind you that you're under oath and I'm going to ask if you could present the new architecture that, for the building. And I think it's really important to point out the message that we received from the board and what, how you incorporate that message into your redesign.
Great, thank you, Mr. Pate. Yes, the board was very instrumental in guiding and providing some feedback with respect to the overall appearance of the building. The building is a convenience store, it's a 3,000-square-foot rectangular building, but the, the appearance of the building was very important to the board and the community. So with that being said, we went back, looked at the surrounding areas, the residential structures, the bank across the street and redesigned the building more in accordance with what we felt fit the neighborhood better than the original building. The boards I have in front of you, this was. Big board, big board, sorry. This board here was the original building that we talked about, the board did not like. Very blank walls, masonry, very impersonal, not very community-friendly. So with that being said, we came back.
Ken, you want to mark that as 54?
So the old one is A54?
Yes.
Correct, and I'm. Thanks, Ken. Put the new one up. Great, thank you.
So we have 855, our new rendering of the, of the new building. We've taken the building, made it look more residential, more colonial in nature. We've incorporated materials that are stronger materials, more durable materials. We have a rustic brick base that's a dark red burgundy color base. We have hardy plank cementitious board siding up above, not vinyl. We have accent trim elements around all of the windows, around the entrance area, below the soffits. We've changed the storefront out to a storefront that has the grid muttons in there to again bring it to residential feel and dimension. We've also added storefront windows on each side of the entrance area, which were blank wall areas before. Those areas are basically going to be spandrel glass, which would be glass you can't see through because there's going to be merchandise and everything behind those areas. And that same appearance was carried around to the South Laurel facade where we added some storefront at the recommendation or guidance of the board. Again, blacked out, but it'll have the appearance of windows facing the street. We've also added a small window that would look like an attic in a home up in the gable end of the roof. We've returned the roof elements back into the gables to add some more detail and accentuate the pediment area where we have the signage, the internally illuminated sign that would conform to the percentage of wall area that we have for the facade. And the roof, as you can see, is a sloped gable roof that has the dormer in the front. And as you turn the sides, you can see the dormer is not at the rear. So at the very bottom of the page, you'll see that we went back and investigated a way in which we could put the rooftop equipment into a sloped roof. So we've basically done, has hollowed out a section at the rear of the roof which faces all of the dense vegetation. We've screened it for safety and code requirements and the equipment would be located on that back area, which would be a flat section of roof. The area is open to the environment, allows the equipment to breathe, fresh air to be done, to be used by the equipment. And again, as you can see, the durable materials, the upgraded materials have been carried on all four sides of the building. We have the brick base, the hardy plank. We have a couple of wall-mounted light fixtures that are coordinated with the site plan. And again, we feel that this is a very good blend for the adjacent neighborhood and it very much resembles the bank across the street with more modern and color flares. It's more in keeping with today's contemporary house, but still colonial and traditional look to the building.
Did you say the glass was molyne glass?
There would be moltenes in the glass.
Oh, right, big improvement.
Thank you very much.
Shopping and looking at the unit first.
Does anyone else have any other questions for the architect? Comments? Kate, Bob, you're all set?
Yes.
Yes, I would just say that we received these prior to the hearing that was initially scheduled for June. My review letter that stated, I think, June 14th, I agree with the comments that were just made by both Dimitri and the applicant's architect. I think that, you know, these are, it's a big improvement, it's high-quality materials and they listen to everything the board and I had asked for.
Good. Anyone else? Any member of the public have any questions about this witness and the testimony he has given? Seeing none? Go ahead. Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant's final professional witness is Christine Caphone, our professional planner. And I think we'll. Join me here? We can do your credentials.
We do.
So Christine Caphone has been sworn, but I'll ask that she begin her testimony this evening, sharing with you her education and professional background.
Hi, good evening, for the record, Christine Nizaro Caphone. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing for 25 years as a consulting planner. I've been qualified here in Holmdel and in excess of 400 other planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, so I've testified on well over 1,000 applications. I'm currently the principal and owner of the Caphone Consulting Group, which is my own planning consulting firm that I've had since 2009. My licenses are current and valid. In addition to providing testimony, I'm also an affordable housing special master. I serve about 30 different municipalities in that capacity. I also teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. In addition to that, I have periodically taught at Monmouth University, a full semester-long course, special topics in real estate, which is a lot of fun, but very time-consuming. In addition to that, I am the planner for the Casino Redevelopment Authority in Atlantic City and a couple of other municipalities, but by and large, my practice is appearing before planning and zoning boards as an applicant's witness.
May I ask that Ms. Caphone's credentials be found acceptable to the board and allow her to testify as a planner? Yes. Does anybody have questions about her credentials? Seeing none, your credentials are accepted, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Caphone, I would ask if you could just take a few moments to share with the board the nature of your preparation, what you do to be ready and what you do in your investigation. And then in a narrative, without my interruption, please take us through the proof.
Sure, so as the board well knows and as you probably see, the planner is usually the last witness to testify and that's because our applicant, our testimony or my testimony will build, be on the building blocks of all the testimony that was issued prior. So what we do typically is we visit the site and the subject property. I am very familiar with the subject property. I've been probably by the site countless, if not hundreds of times in my lifetime. Particularly over the summer, I had a lot of time, opportunity to go pass here as my daughter is a swimmer and swam at the Haslett Swim and Tennis Club almost every morning at 5:45. So I had plenty of opportunity to go to and pass the site in the early mornings this year. So, and that's important. It's very important we visit the subject property and be familiar with not just the subject property, but what's around it. We, I also review the application submission documents, I review your planner and your engineer's review letters, I review the master plan, I review the zoning ordinance, and I listen to the testimony. I listen to the testimony that goes in. I listen to the testimony that goes in. I listen to the questions that the board members ask. So that is the routine practice for me to prepare to come and testify to you on really any variance, whether it's a D variance, a C variance, that's sort of my regular prep. So I did all of that in conjunction with preparing for this application. I was not present at the first hearing, but I did look at the transcript from that, and I was here for the secondary hearings here. When I say here, I was at the Zoom meeting for those. So that's what I did to prepare to be here tonight. The subject property, this is an interesting application to me because I have done a fair amount of testimony on service stations and retail convenience stores. I have probably testified on no short of several dozen of those applications in my career. And this, to me, was an interesting application because the subject property sits in the township's B2 zone, and the service station is the permitted use. It's actually a conditionally permitted use, and we meet all of the conditions, which I have to say, in the dozens of applications I've done, is rare that that's usually what's triggering the D variance. But here, what's triggering the D variance is the convenience store. The B2 zone in Homedale incorporates by use all the uses in the B1 zone, and there is a prohibition on convenience stores. So that's why we're here. We need a D variance. The service station is permitted, and we also need a D variance for what you're considering two uses on one lot. I can tell you that I have successfully argued, I think it was Middlesex Borough, where we did an interpretation, and I testified as the planner there, that I really believe that this type of use, convenience with gas, functions as one integrated use. That is still my opinion. I acknowledge that we need the relief here, but I think, and you'll hear a little bit later in my testimony, that I think the site can certainly support the two uses because they really do function as one, as one integrated use. So, again, the reason we're here for the D variance is because of the convenience store. So we have an obligation as a D1 use to demonstrate to you that the site is particularly suitable for this use, that special reasons exist, and to talk about the medici reconciliation, and then the positive and negative criteria. So as far as why I think this site is particularly suited for this application, it's a corner lot. It's about 40,000 square feet, so just over what you consider a builder's acre is about 40,000 square feet of square acres, 40,560. So we're somewhat deficient with respect to the lot area, but that's an existing condition. So I think that the board can find that this is a prominent corner location, which the applicant has been able to design to meet all of the bulk and intensity requirements of the P2 zone, which is important, but also to provide some buffering, and also to have a convenient of the retail fuel as a permitted use. So I think when you factor in all of those issues, I think the board can certainly come to the conclusion that the site is particularly suitable for the convenience store. And when I was looking at the zoning ordinance, I thought it was very interesting that as of right in the B2 zone, you could have a bakery, you could have a food service, and you could have a delicatessen. And if you look at this use, I mean, we are going to have, in conjunction with this use, a fresh prep for food area. So not too different than P&amp;P, which was across the street, is you can go in and you can get a fresh maid's order or something. So I thought, you know, from a planning point of view, we don't think it's a huge departure because when you go into a deli, it's not unusual. If you go into Jersey Mike's to get a sandwich, you can get some chips, you can get a soda, you can get cookies. So I don't think that this is dissimilar, and I can't come to a conclusion that this is not something that was radically different than what the township envisioned here. And what I also did was the prohibition in the B1 actually talks about prohibiting supermarkets and convenience stores. But interestingly or not, it doesn't define those terms. It doesn't define deli in your ordinance, and it doesn't define supermarket, and it doesn't define convenience store. So we're left as planners then to reconcile, okay, well, what were we really trying to omit here? And I would have to think that it was probably, in my opinion, something somewhat larger than is envisioned by the applicant on this property. This, as you know from our prior witnesses, is a 3,000-square-foot building with a good portion of it devoted to the deli and the fresh prep, which is actually permitted in the zone. So from a planning point of view, I really don't see where this is a radical departure from what would otherwise be permitted in the B2 zone. And I guess that's how, in my mind, I reconcile the medici proofs, that given the continued governing body omission of this, that I would have to say, from my planning point of view, I do not find this to be, probably not to rise to the level of what was envisioned to not be appropriate for this property, just given the intensity of it. So that's the suitability and the medici. As far as the positive criteria, in order to substantiate our burden of proof, we have to demonstrate that one or more... Am I going too fast for you? I feel like I'm ramping up here, so I'm going to try to dial it back. I'm going to take a sip of water and slow down because I feel like I'm really probably driving you nuts over there.
I'd like to ask a question. You said the radical departure was... What is radical departure in your...
So radical departure, it's not really a defined term. I guess a radical departure would be something that would be significant. So the zoning ordinance was specific, and it said you can't have a convenience store or a supermarket. So I suppose if you were putting on this building or on this site, you know, a 25,000-square-foot Lidl-type building, and you tried to put something like that there, I would say that would be a pretty significant departure because the zoning ordinance was specific that it doesn't want a supermarket here. So it doesn't want what I would consider a big shopping mall like that. But I don't think a 3,000-square-foot building that has a portion of it devoted to the fresh prep of food, which is actually an as-of-right permitted use, is not what I would consider a big departure. So I hope that answers your question. So shifting over to the positive criteria, and the positive criteria are articulated in 40,55D-2 of the municipal land use law. They are not unique to Homedale Township. They are not my crafty planning language. They are simply the purposes of the municipal land use law found at that section of the municipal land use law, and they're identified by letter. In order to substantiate our burden of proof, we have to satisfy one or more of those purposes of the municipal land use law. So I think that there are four of them that, in my opinion, the board can look at. I think you can consider criteria A, promoting the general welfare, particularly the testimony of Mr. Silva, I think, is really compelling in this application. He testified a lot about the betterments and what we are doing to improve the environmental conditions on this property, as far as removing things from the buffer area and creating new areas of green space on the property. So that, I believe, allows us to rely on criteria A. Criteria G talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. So despite the prohibition of the convenience store, I think that this is still an appropriate location. I love the idea that this is walkable and that you have more residents coming into the area. I think people will walk here, so I think the suggestion of making and enhancing the pedestrian connectivity to the site is a really good one because I think people are going to walk here. And I think that that's great. I guess that's the land planner, the urban planner in me. I love a walkable community. I love the ability of the neighbors being able to walk and get a cup of coffee or a quick sandwich or, you know, Swedish fish, whatever they might want to walk to the store and get. I think it's great. So I loved those ideas, and I think that that will certainly have a positive impact on the fabric of this area if the board were to move favorably on this application. And I also think criteria I, which talks about creating a desirable visual environment. We clearly missed a mark on our first go-around with the architecture. It was a little stark and a little barren, so I think we've come a long way with that. I think the building that we're proposing really has great curb appeal, and I think Mr. Testa did a really great job. So I think that we can rely on criteria I, creating a desirable visual environment, particularly when you have an opportunity to go out and look at the site today. I think to say that the site lacks curb appeal is an understatement and a very nice way to describe the subject property. So I think that this is really an upgrade to the appearance of the property. And I also think the board can look at criteria M, an efficient use of the land. I don't see the two uses on one lot as a problem here. I see it more as a benefit, really. I think the fact that you have the six fueling dispensers is going to help with people are less likely than to hang out at the convenience store. You've got the gas station attendants there attending to the fuel, so I think that that's only a benefit, and I think the board can rely on criteria M. Again, statutorily, we only have to advance one or more, but those are the four that I think are probably most relevant or germane to this application. I thought about criteria B, which also talks about flooding. I think the board could probably consider that as well, just because I think the site today, and I know that this was testified by other applicants, really lacks any type of formal stormwater management system, and we are proposing that. So I thought, you know, B is not one that we really rely on a whole lot as planners, but I think it might be appropriate here. So to say that at least four or five of the positive criteria exist in this application is certainly my opinion. So that leaves me to reconcile the negative criteria, and the negative criteria does not ask you to hold this or any other applicant to such a burden that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grants of the variance would outweigh any detriment to the zone plan or the public good. So we'll start with the zone plan, and again, in my opinion, when you look at the B2, which incorporates the B1, there are a lot of things that are permitted in that zoning district: bakeries, lunch... I'll get the uses and I'll read them because I think it's important. Retail sale establishments, limited to meat markets, seafood markets, bakeries, specialty food stores and delicatessen, and then there is, but not including, convenience stores or supermarkets. Art galleries and frame shops, craft stores, antique stores, jewelry stores, pharmacies and drugstores, sporting goods stores, gift shops, hobby shops, toy stores, bookstores, records and tape stores, clothing stores, shoe stores. So that's a little antiquated. Now, we know our ordinance might be a little old. Record and tape stores, I don't think those are around anymore. Clothing stores, shoe stores, hardware stores, packaged liquor stores, fabric and sewing stores, computer sales, travel agencies, and florists. So those are some of the things that were envisioned to be as-of-right in the B1 zone. So as far as the substantial detriment, and also the purpose of this zone is to provide for, I believe it's small neighborhood goods and services is how it reads, or something quite similar to that is the way the ordinance reads. And I think we are certainly accomplishing that goal with our application of providing goods and services. So what that leads me to believe is that I don't see a substantial detriment to the zone plan or to the public good. I think one of the things that I know came up also was the hours of operation, and the board was less than enamored with our 24-hour proposal, and we definitely pulled that back. And I think that that certainly is something to consider to the impact to the neighbors, and I think we were, you know, we respectfully tried to eliminate that aspect of the application. So I think statutorily, we meet our burden of proof for the grant of the D1 variance. I unequivocally, from a planning point of view, think that this is a really good application for this site, and I think it's very consistent, actually, with the provision of small goods and services, which was what the B2 zone was created for. In closing, you last reexamined your master plan in 2020 here. I'm not going on my phone. I'm going to read some of the things from the master plan. I didn't have time to print them out today, so I think if I could just read them. So I'm reading from the economic plan element, from the goals and objectives of your 2020 master plan. And one of those goals was to enhance the overall appearance of the township's commercial corridors and encourage a high standard of visual quality, architectural design, landscaping, maintenance for all development. And I think, you know, sometimes it's tedious when you have to keep coming back over and over on an application, but I think that the board should really be applauded because I think with all of the input that you gave us, and we as an applicant team then pivoted to respond to those things, I think we really were able to accomplish that criteria F that's in the master plan for economic. I mean, this is a commercial zone, and it's not really looking so fabulous today. So I think that what you have before you represents a really good opportunity to upgrade the appearance of the site, and to do so, you know, I think our project, even though I think we're on our fourth hearing now, the application is substantially better than it was when it was first submitted, and even some more good suggestions that we got tonight. So I think collaboratively, I can say from a planning point of view, I really, when I read that today, I was like, I really think that the process accomplishes that goal of the master plan, and we did meet a lot of those criteria in that goal. So I think we substantiate our burden of proof for the grant of the D variance. I hope that the board, or at least five of you, will agree with us that we do that so that we can have this application approved and move forward and upgrade the appearance of this corner for the people who are living there now, driving by, and going to live there in the future.
I have one question. You cited the architectural improvements and the landscaping improvements and noted Mr. Silva's testimony about environmental improvements. There, I think there's one more significant improvement, and I would just ask the weight that you would place on a property that has no stormwater management, currently is sheet-flowing waters into an environmental corridor that is now going to have a complete stormwater management system and will not be just sending dirty water into the street corridor. I just would look for your evaluation or weight on that.
Yeah. So I apologize if I didn't speak to that in the negative criteria. I thought I did address it in the positive criteria where I said I thought we can rely on criteria B, and I said that that's not one that we always rely on, but here in this case, because the site lacks any type of formal stormwater management and we are creating that, I felt that B was appropriate. So I probably should have closed that loop and addressed it again in the negative criteria because that, in addition to, which made me think, I thought you were going to say the landscaping, because I didn't testify, I don't think anyway, that the site really has any formal landscaping on it and that we are proposing, you know, a formal landscaping plan, which I think is certainly another one of the betterments of the property. So...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions. Okay. Does anyone here have any questions about her testimony or comments?
I have one comment, which probably is more towards the architect, but I didn't think about saying it until she mentioned it. The canopy and the sign that you're proposing, is the architectural look of that going to be tied into the way the building looks?
Would be Mr. Testa's turn.
Yes, sir. It's going to be consistent with the other design. Have the same height, the 18 feet to the top. 18 feet to the top, the sign still has the two, three-foot-by-eight-foot signs, the detailed, you know, cornice trim along the top. The vertical pilasters between supporting are going to be reinforced with some decorative corbeling and solder course to just break up the facade. But again, yes, the monument sign remains the same size previously. Cement, which is instead of a block face, now we have the same red brick face from the bottom of that as well.
And what color will the canopy be?
It'll be white to match the trim that's on the building.
Okay. Sounds good. Should have mentioned it earlier. And one last comment. We talked about pedestrians. I didn't mention, you guys should have known this, that the New Jersey Transit buses stop right on Laurel Avenue there, pick up and drop off every day. So there's more people that would walk into the site.
Yes.
That's what I have. Kate?
I don't have any further questions. I think that was very thorough, and I think that many of the items have been addressed in previous testimony, so I'm...
I have a question for Bob.
Go ahead.
So I've gone after is there a lot of things that we can work with the site? I mean, well, I understand something may be legal allowed. There's a lot going on on this space. I'm going to put all these gas, big base, cars, food, storage, canopies. We don't have all that much room for all these cars coming up. There needs to be a lot of traffic in one small area.
During the peak hours, yes. I'd agree with that. But the site does have circulation. It does have for, I mean, circulation even for the emergency vehicles. And you're right, though. During the morning hours and probably in the evening hours, there's going to be a lot of movement in that area, you know, people coming in for gas and things like that, but that's only in certain parts of the day. I don't think it's a...
No, probably not all the...
Yeah, right. Peak times, exactly.
And when traffic and we were talking about how he had done the traffic study for another similar application in town, and I just come back to that site, probably, probably shouldn't make it late that feature because it really is a bad example of why something should be allowed. And what's wrong with the... I think about a small space, which is important to a busy intersection with people coming down in all directions, feeding into the two-way road where there's not a lot of room for anybody to go, not shoulder, not second lane, so people can actually, a couple of people being thrown to that same intersection coming out the corner. So I'd like to get further, because I have more to attract. From your perspective, I just, I really was there. I just, there's just, it is times. It's really a lot of that space.
Yep.
I have a two-part question, since we have essentially discussed the British Steel Plastics. Do you anticipate a plan for... Do you anticipate a plan for children coming to that location? And in what way do you try to address that safety aspect that kids from the neighborhood are coming to the building?
Okay, do we have, do we have a bike rack? I can't remember. We do, I thought so. So we did anticipate that, and we have a bike rack on the property, so that if children are coming, you know, I think we have made some commitments tonight to ensure that there will be good pedestrian access to the site, and we have a bike rack on site to accommodate if children are coming on bike, or if they walk on, they can use the network of sidewalks that we'll be creating, you know, and paths to get to the site.
My last question is, I think this question came up before. Is convenience stores have separates and vaping products and each other?
So that, I don't know.
The answer was yes, that there would be the sale of those, I don't know.
So, also vaping products, because I don't know the topic of vaping products.
Yes, that question was asked.
Is there any way you could restrict that? Because if, now you anticipate kids should be going in there, despite what markets pose them to vaping products, which are essentially for them to use on.
Well, they certainly wouldn't be of age to get them, so it's much like lottery tickets. They would, they wouldn't be able to get lottery tickets either, because you have to be a certain age to purchase them.
I couldn't come up yet.
I guess it would be no different than a liquor store, which is a permitted use in the zone, if the children were in the area, if they wanted to try to go in there and buy White Claws, they would have to produce their ID to do it, because you have to have your ID to produce, to purchase those things.
I'm certain that you are aware that there are state laws about checking, and there, Mr. Bruce Olowski, the chairman of Mr. Bruce Olowski, has close to 30 convenience stores, and is very familiar with the sting operations that take place throughout the state, for anyone who does not check, who is, is faithful in checking ages, people's products or so.
Do most convenience stores have vaping products?
And rolling papers and everything else that goes with it.
Is there a ATM machine here?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Is that, I think that it's considered a banned product, and it's just a part of the convenience store.
There's a, yes, there's an ATM machine that's required. There's an expectation that there's an ATM machine.
And please do we have that indoor ATM machine?
Yes, indoor ATM machine.
I have a question regarding another property Mr. Bruce Olowski might own, I'm not sure. Corner of Alexander Road and Princeton Heights Town Road, is that yours? No, okay. The reason I was asking is I, I just wanted to know the size related to the size of this project, whether they were similar or not.
Wait, do you know what planner, in this, we just, we just talked about the situation right, that this zone doesn't allow the convenience store, and I'm wondering actually, about vaping products, which have existed years ago, tobacco products, that I'm wondering if that's a reason why in this zone, that they make a distinction between convenience stores, all these other types of stuff?
Yeah, I, I can't speak directly to the intention of how the zone was written, but just going off the list of uses, you would typically find tobacco products, especially, you know, 20, 30 years ago, at the liquor store, a deli, even a drugstore, or something of that nature. So I, I, that, that was not, I, I would say just from my perspective now, that was likely not one of the challenges.
But correct me if I'm wrong, you'd also find tobacco products at a supermarket in certain instances. I mean, I know...
Yeah, the service center, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's not that one differentiates from the other, I just...
No, 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 yeah, those were the two that were prohibited. I would, I would also say that a lot of this zoning is based on the B1 district, which is Homedale Village, so that also, you know, and I think that these are meant to be small, these are meant to be small areas. Ms. Capone mentioned, you know, the purpose, and just, just for the board's intention, purpose is to recognize small areas of commercial services offering neighborhood conveniences. So I think that while the context might be different, the, the relationship between the B2, and especially a small site like this, and the B1 zone is really that they're not large highway commercial areas. So I think that that's important to look at the context here. And the last thing I would add is that there is a variance that's technically required that was addressed a couple of points in the hearing, not directly tonight, but the, the minimum lot size for a service station, and this is not a conditional use requirement, this is just a bulk requirement, is 42,000 square feet, where the applicant here has 40,0641 square feet. So that's a variance, but it, it's, it's not, it, it's, it's, it's along the lines of what was envisioned for a service station in this district. So they, they, they do look at small sites. I think, you know, this is, there are two sites, there are two uses going on this site. As Ms. Capone said, you know, there, there are arguments, whether it's one use or two use, the way that this ordinance is, that the township's ordinance is written, it is two uses, I think so, but that was part of her testimony. So that's all kind of the context I would put this in when you're thinking about the capacity of the site.
Any other questions on the testimony that's been given for planning? And on the explanation of, and justification for the varying, the variances that are needed for this application? Does any member of the public have any questions for the witness on the test, the planning testimony that's just been given? Seeing none, we'll close that.
Thank you.
I've had a request for a five-minute break.
Surely.
It's 8:37, we'll resume at 8:43. Oh, that clock says 8:38, well, 43.
I'm not going to count the seconds.
Probably, so you can't do anything dumb.
Just like all the police officers have body cams, so normally when we go to the first aid, shooting the police, they'll go over and have the state protection.
Sir, how are you today?
Long and morning, how's it going?
We are, um...
What do we got here? And they can go, and they go into the house with the camera on.
Monday morning, or Tuesday morning, after the day weekend, yeah. It's, it's, it's current.
I said, is there any...
Yeah, like a summer Friday, but I'm, I'm ready.
That's an exception.
Your home lane doing, a lot of fires going on.
I've been a couple times.
Yeah, in the main lane, but I'm, I'm, my daughter's doing right now.
Yeah, actually, I relocated down here for mostly a year, I'm probably...
So I think he instructed, Loretta, he was instructed that he needed to be here if you want to make comments. The board can consider, since we've had a hybrid application, in my opinion, the board can consider, since we've really had a hybrid application, Zoom plus live. If they want to summarize, it's a two-page, very small typed email to Loretta and it's quite extensive, it'll be more than a three-minute, you know, comment. It can't be summarized, but a lot of it's, some of it's out-to-date as noted by the board chair. So my recommendation probably would be to stick to the live meeting requirements of in-person testimony subject to cross-examination, but given it's a hybrid, I'll leave it to the board if they choose otherwise.
I agree with our attorney.
Anyone have any other?
Agreed.
Agreed, so the person isn't here and can't speak and can't be cross-examined about it. I mean, they looked at one piece of it and a bunch of it was out-of-date because of the changes that have happened over the evolution of the application. Okay, so that completes the public portion. Just about time for a motion, but I think let's like to get the two attorneys and professionals to make sure that he has all the questions that need to be, or commitments that need to be recorded as, as conditions in the resolution, that we have all of that complete and we're agreed upon exactly what it is that a motion would entail. So do you want to just briefly go over what you have?
There's a lot of testimony, so particularly when they go on and on, what I, my suggestion is, and I can read some of them that I have here, and some of them have been resolved by the amended plans, is to obviously just submit them to the, to the board, I obviously submit everything to the applicants' council and our professionals as well, after going through all the testimony and the notes and, you know, the actual testimony, the transcripts. At that point, obviously, if somebody has a comment, we'll be here when we adopt the resolution to make any changes. But I, my suggestion is to do it as part of the resolution draft and obviously get Mr. Page's comments if we missed something or we missed, if I misstated something, and obviously Kate and Bob will input as well, and then obviously the board members, after that's completed, will also have their, their chance. But there's been a lot of them and a lot of them have been addressed actually as we've gone along, so they don't apply anymore.
And Marty, there were also, a lot of the comments that I know that I've made are now on the most recent plans.
Yes, that's right.
So they incorporated them already.
Like the window, like the grids in the window.
Right, all of those things are already on the plans.
And that was one from last time, and that's been addressed.
And I'll comment as well, your planners' comment, that having at one time been involved with the writing of a development reg and a zoning ordinance, it is absolutely impossible to write the perfect ordinance, which can consider every possible conceivable thing that might be proposed for any lot of any shape. And hence, this process, it's a human process, which the state put into place, both for planning and zoning, that the applicant comes to a group of people and you make your story and you interact, and as half has happened here, it's a positive interaction because everybody's working together to try to get a good proposal, a good development for their town. And I agree that it's been a constructive, and I appreciate the work of the applicant and his staff in trying to consider suggestions that have come from the board.
So I will just, to clarify with Mr. Page, we had, possibly, the conditions are delivery during night and nights, or peak hour for food or fuel, controls on the trash collection hours and hours of operation. So hours of operation, I had notes from 5:00 to 11:00, I mean, I'm not looking at my, I'm just looking at, you know, my cheat sheet here, not my notes. I just want to confirm with you, is that your recollection and the board, 5:00 to 11:00?
5:00 to 11:00 is what we left off.
And we're going to have some kind of controls on trash collection, same hours, or I thought I should, the board and you, but I didn't have the hours written for trash collection.
Not, not overnights and not peak activity, not peak activity hours.
Okay, so that'd be the same. And, and same for delivery, not peak and not night. Okay. Very good. That's the only clarification of my conditions.
Yeah, okay. Are there any other specific points that any board member would like to make sure that are in the resolution that haven't been recently mentioned? We will get a chance to look at the draft once he's put it all together, because there were a lot of things discussed over the several hearings. Not, is there a motion with regard to this application?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application based on all the conditions that we've talked about, and the updated plans, and whatever Marty has that I might have left off.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Do our professionals have any comments at this point on the, the application?
No further comment, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing further for me either.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, or, or if any board member, as they vote, that would like to make a comment to make sure that Marty has all the rationale and arguments for wording the resolution as is appropriate. Not, roll call please, huh?
So I'm going to vote no. I will say I think the applicant wore very hard to make the thoughtful presentation, but my fundamental issue here is one that I don't think is overcome, really that it all can overcome it, for planning, obviously having the municipality, that area is so overcrowded, I've gone by there now potentially close to a dozen times since this application started, and even on a Sunday morning in the summer when nothing is going on at 11:00, it takes almost between eight and 10 minutes to get going south on Middle Road to get from, from Hidden Woods, which is the condo complex, to the lot. That's now, without an additional use there. So what we have is we have two lanes in the direction, and there's just not the space to allow people to come and go from these single avenues, with no shoulders, which nobody's going to form an out of. So traffic stopping to turn in and out of the gas station and convenience store is just going to further exacerbate the traffic problems that issue. The traffic engineer testified, I will point out that he testified to the previous application that he mentioned at the Homedale Road, Bethany Road Gas Station, and he said that the site improvements that he mentioned have improved the area, I think that's what was framed, which actually haven't made any changes at all to that area. So he spoke about it in his application as if it had already been done and what he testified to was implemented and successful, but in actuality, they have not installed the convenience store, so they got the pro-volt from the store, so that area may not be able to get it. And while he voted for that, you see, there's really a very analogous area in terms of the traffic, the simple lane roads, the multi-corners. If I could vote over on that application, I'd probably vote no. So it's too much traffic in that area, it's too much food, and by right, the applicant is entitled to one use, which I certainly, by right, is entitled to it, but not entitled to the two use, and I think for safety issues, he has an epic burden. In addition to that, I have concerns with all this traffic, the traffic and lanes, when we talk about pedestrians, walking, we're going to have a lot of people cutting across, particularly from the park, which is not at the joint, but by actually down the road. So we're going to throw pedestrians in there and add more danger to the situation. While it may improve the area in certain regards, in terms of store owner management, the area really doesn't need an additional convenience store, I don't know if it's certainly positive in that regard, this clean, isolated area, other locations including other convenience stores, very short distance to this location, so on the low.
I'm a yes. My biggest concern with it was the environmental impact, and I think tonight they responded with the information that I needed to be satisfied that everything's being done to prevent any further disruption to the environment, especially with the creek running so closely behind it. So it does need vast improvement in that location. There are issues with the traffic, I agree, but I think this, this will be a good project. That's, that's my given opinion of it.
Mr. Hearn?
Thank you for making changes and everything throughout the process for us, for me, that I concerns about. I do agree with the traffic issue will be increased, but my vote is yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Patsy?
So I came into this meeting also a little bit on edge, both ways. I lived on that corner, or that development off that corner for about a year, and I remember regretting having to leave every morning and rush hour coming home. So traffic 100% is horrible on that corner. However, that's not something that this property contributed to, you know, unfortunately, that's just, that's just the DNA of that corner, you know, it's, it's, it needs to be either opened up or, I don't know, maybe some imminent domain has to be put in place at some point. But when I look at the, this corner lot and what it's being utilized for now as opposed to what's being proposed, I definitely think that I'm swayed more for the advantages than I am the detriments, you know, and the detriment for me is not anything other really than the actual traffic. You guys conceded to a lot of things, things that I wouldn't have ever asked, including this, the latest with the vaping. I'm not a person that vapes, I don't like it, I have children that are at the age where they, you know, they're all experimenting and it's not something I like to see sold in any stores, but I also don't know that a fuel station today could really exist without a convenience store. You know, I know that for my own purposes, when I go to fuel up my own car, in many instances, I will run into a convenience store, even for a bottle of water. So I think it's unfair to ask in today's times to have one without the other, and if one is permitted, why shouldn't the other be with it? However, on that corner, I do believe that there's going to be more traffic, and unfortunately, I would have liked to have seen some of the residents here that maybe were opposed to it, but they all had the opportunity and there's no one here. For, for those reasons alone and, and the accommodations which I applaud you on making over the course of this application, I'm going to vote yes.
I heard everything and I'm really pleased that the applicant pretty much agreed to mostly everything we've said, I don't even think he said one note to anything we've said. I think having this convenience store gas station in the northern part of Homedale is a plus for that neighborhood, a lot of people always feel they're neglected in that area, so giving them a, really an improved architectural-looking building will enhance that corner, make it look a lot nicer. The people there will have someplace that they can run out to get conveniences, the people that get off the bus right on that corner can pick up the eggs and, and the milk that, that their wives probably asked them to get on the way home. I, I don't really see anything negative there, I think by far the positive things that that's going to bring to that corner outweigh the only negative that may be, may be traffic. I'm not convinced that it's going to add that much, that it's going to cause any longer delay there in that corner. So I'd rather have all the positive things, an improved corner, convenience for the neighbors, than worry about if I have to wait an extra 30 seconds on that corner. So my vote is yes.
Mr. Hearn?
As I said before, I appreciate very much the applicant's cooperation in working with the board in resolving many of the open questions. I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made here before, that the one negative is potentially the traffic question, but there's been testimony from the applicant's engineer, the board's engineer, that the impact should be very small. It won't be zero, but I was, you know, somewhat persuaded by the fact that likely most of the use of these, this gas station and the store will be passed by traffic, not more than increased traffic. And I was intrigued by the planner's testimony, is this one use or is this two uses? And I agreed, you know, the ordinances in question were written 30 or 40 years ago, and today this combination in Homedale is common. So that technically, I guess, a variant, use variance is needed to cover the issues, but that's so. In large measure, I agree also with the comments made, this will be an improvement for the neighborhood. So thank you for your efforts on this application, I also vote yes.
Ms. Klor.
I think to me that the reality of the traffic constraints in the board, of the huge problem, however, since some accommodations mean for trash pickup and filling of the tanks during, not during, on weekends and so on, and you can do all the convenience, it's all for that, the location, you know, the bus stop, there are the buses coming, it's not for the board yet.
Motion passes. Congratulations. We look forward to a successful project and being able to buy some gas and goodies in the not-too-distant future.
Mr. Chairman and all board members and board professionals, on behalf of the Bruce Olowski family and personally, I want to thank you. I think it's a process and I think we all watch the process work, so thank you, good night.
Okay, continuing, we do have a couple other items of business here on tonight's agenda that shouldn't take too long. The first, going to item five, it's a memorializing resolution.
Yeah.
Well, she's getting what she needs. I think we did the right thing. Just such a trashy thing. Jerry, want to go, item five?
Thanks, that's all right. We got too quick. Memorializing resolutions. Item number five, One Crocus Drive, Christie and Jeff Sargent, block 50.43, lot five in the R-30 zone, zoning board variance number 449. Applicant granted variance relief for side yard setback of 30 feet, where 80 feet is required by ordinance for the installation of a built-in pool.
We've received the draft resolution for Marty about this. Covered, I think, everything. I had not aware that anybody, does anybody have any additions or corrections to the draft resolution? In that case, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll take the first.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. Bucelino?
Yes.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. Patsy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Farrell-Topless?
Yes.
Yes. Item six.
32 Main Street, Golierno Hidalgo and Jennifer Perry Hidalgo, block three, lot two, in the B1 zone, zoning board variance number 454. Applicant granted variance relief for front setback, where the existing home is 23.6 feet from the property line and 50 feet is required, and the left side back, which is 1.9 feet, where 20 feet is required. The home is more than 250 years old, and applicant would like to restore the home, adding a second floor space above the existing first floor space, with no increase to the footprint of the house.
Again, is there any additions or corrections to the resolution as submitted by our attorney? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second, Dimitri, roll call.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. Bucelino?
Yes.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. Patsy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Farrell-Topless?
Yes.
And Mr. Bucelino?
Yes. Did you send us a resolution about the annual report? I don't recall seeing it.
I might not have seen it.
Well, we'll do it next time then. Okay. We've had draft minutes from Loretta for the meeting of June 16th. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a much in the way of a professional report, but I'm going to ask Marty for a comment in a moment. We did adopt the resolution going forward with in-person meetings. I have no problem myself with that for our next meeting, which is September 1st, which shouldn't be a big, a long agenda.
What is the state agenda?
It's a use variance for a new use in the Kohl's Shopping Center.
Adult take care.
Adult take care, whereas childcare is permitted, but adult is not.
Yeah.
That's something we should put on the annual report.
Well, afterwards, let's hear the case and see what gets to be said, sure.
Childcare is protected by the MLUL, so they...
It's...
Childcare is protected by the MLUL.
Not for senior.
Not for senior, but then, you know, we'll see what the applicant comes in, but there's an argument that it's inherently beneficial.
Right.
We'll see, we'll see what they come in.
But then, still called the enclave, I have a problem with that name because there's another development in Homedale with the same name, the dementia center for September 22nd for both completeness waivers and assuming we grant the waivers, continued public hearing. That may or may not be, we might, may, well, anyway, for September 1st, for sure, I think we can go live. This worked tonight very well, I believe, seeing faces was nice. For the September 22nd, we should have a couple of weeks that we can delay, decide yet as to how we want to handle that. The Zoom also, to my point of view, has worked very well.
I hate this.
I think...
Each to their own.
But I understand your health concerns.
Yeah.
And I take that very seriously.
Now, anyway, with regard to the dementia center, there's clearly already been rumblings amongst the public about it. And a portion of the rumblings have been factually false.
Wait a second. We're still on a live meeting.
Correct.
I'm just talking about the hearing itself.
I'm just talking about the hearing. I'm not going to talk about the substance of the application at all. As a consequence, since it's out there and some people are saying some things, I just want Marty to remind board members of what is and what isn't appropriate.
You know, the board members should not say anything. Obviously, you're, some of you know, some may not know. We're supposed to listen to the testimony and are professionals and judge the application on that testimony alone and not what you're hearing outside. If you're familiar with the site, could you drive by it, as Valerie indicated tonight, with a traffic comment that's appropriate? If you're familiar with it, but you just shouldn't be listening to all these outside sources, that's for sure. That's not appropriate. It's grounds for us being overturned no matter what we do, based on either an object or the applicant.
And it's worth reminding people, you can't comment publicly on the application whatsoever. So no comments on any kind of social media sites or any place whatsoever.
That can all be discovered. I mean, at some point, if there's an applicant that's willing to take us to court and has deep enough pockets, they can start looking for discovery of social media.
Also, that really, like, so think of it, you're a judge. While it's not exactly fame, just in your head, it's a help to think that you're a judge. So judges don't go around talking about their cases with their friends or even nails. You're supposed to keep an open mind and refer all the evidence to your vote. So especially when there's a contentious application, just remember that you have to be very careful that you have to represent the board when it's with the applicant.
Yeah.
How can you get more background information, objective background information before that?
Beforehand, no. It all has to be in the room of the hearing.
But you'll get the application ahead of time.
And we will provide reports.
You'll see the review letters, you'll see the application itself, the plans, you can study those. You could drive by the site, obviously, but you have to listen for the testimony to answer the questions that you think you may have.
Just as much as on this past application, which was a, lots of questions got asked. Things got raised that you may not have thought about. And that's the plus of having a group of people with diverse attitudes to look at it. All of that, any question, save it for the hearing and then they have to answer on the record.
When it's appropriate, sometimes we've gone to the site. When it's appropriate, sometimes we've had them marked out where things are going to be, so they can understand visually how it's going to impact...
Yeah, that's an important point here.
...the area or the neighborhood. So as the application unfolds, we have obstacles and ability to ask, to do or see other things or ask questions. So, you know, it definitely should get really good in the reason that vote on the application. And that holds.
And if you have anything you're not sure about, you know, ask myself or ask the chair and that will make sure we, if we can't answer you one-on-one, you know, we'll direct it to the application, to the applicant at the time of the application. So don't ever feel like you don't, if you don't know something, you got to just sit there quiet. I mean, it's on the beforehand, right? Ask us, you know, we'll be happy to answer.
No, I don't, I should, I should not discuss the details of any application with any of you. It's a procedural question.
Right.
What's a variance waiver or anything like that? I can talk with you about, but anything further, no. It's got to be during the hearing on the record.
For examples, in this dementia center, I want to go and see, on average in the United States, how many dementia centers are there for a certain population against it? Does it justify going to Homedale?
It's a very delicate question. I think we'll go and research myself.
Or you can ask the applicant.
Yeah.
You can ask the applicant.
So you could ask the applicant. It's your understanding based on some research you did that there's in New Jer, I'm making something up. In New Jersey, there's penalties and they're all in big cities, never in a small, you know, whatever. Ask that question of the applicant's expert, they will answer your question. You know, I'm not sure it's going to matter.
They have...
They're located, but they'll have an answer for you.
We do have one in Homedale.
And you have, and you...
But even if they can't answer that, if you have a question, you say it to their professionals or ours, I'd like to know the following information, but I'm sure somebody will come back to you and answer that first.
I mean, one of the specific questions related to a use variance, is there a need for that use? Doesn't matter what the use is.
I think you should close the meeting if you want to continue this conversation.
I think we're done. We're done.
But I have a comment that I want to make on not having a meeting in Zoom or in person. My comment is that, and it's a little lengthy, but my comment is that I feel that this board should not be different from other boards. So if the planning board, if the township committee are having in-person meetings, I think we owe it to the public to be able to allow the public to come in person and see a meeting rather than try to be on a little Zoom thing and trying to ask a question, not being able to see the exhibits properly. I mean, we, you, you may think they went smoothly, but it was rough. And, you know, I did help Loretta, I don't mind helping, but I mean, it has to be, for something like this application, there's a lot more work to do a Zoom proper meeting to be professional. So I think that it's very important that, especially for that one, that we have an in-person meeting. I understand people have issues with, you know, health and all that, and I'm not saying anything negative about that, you're entitled to that. And I'm sure Loretta will make provisions to make you feel comfortable here, or maybe you can go on speakerphone like some of the township committee does. They've done it.
The township committee is different from this board.
Can we do that?
They said no hybrid, I believe. We were asking about...
Well, I have discussed it with the mayor and with Sharon, the administrator. The mayor was black and white clear, each independent board can make its own decision. In other regards...
In person or Zoom, but did they, they're allowing hybrid too?
I don't think so.
No, the hybrid case is more complicated. And just in general, Greg clearly said, each board makes its own decision on how to run its business.
And Sharon told him.
Period. And Sharon said the same. In terms of the technology, the Zoom, they is, first, there were a couple of glitches with some early ones, but then they got it settled down and it worked. As far as hybrid is concerned, which someone mentioned the school system has used, and Sharon has talked to these people and to the tech person. The, to do a hybrid where you have some people on Zoom and some live requires additional technology in this room. In this room right now, there is only one camera. They don't have the ability to have multiple cameras with multiple people in multiple places. They haven't wanted to spend more money. So they do not have this technology. The township doesn't have the technology to do a full hybrid where each individual person can say, I'm going to be remote, or no, I'm going to be here. And then to have microphones to pick it all up, et cetera.
What about sneeze guards?
What?
What about installing sneeze guards? Because they're really very inexpensive. I get them in my office, right? They do them in squares. There really should be plastic barriers across here and in between each of us, there should be...
That something, Loretta, you can suggest to, yeah, that there should be some additional barriers here.
And you guys are a little close, right? So you definitely should just put a space there and maybe also sneeze guards in between you, but that would seem to eliminate a lot of concerns that we might have.
Yeah, I mean, people have learned too, what is, what's, what puts one at risk? It's close contact, breathing, more than, say, physical contact, touching the surface, someone touching, we didn't know beforehand.
But before you install, you're talking about those plexiglass things around?
Yes.
You know? Why would you install that, like, if you were that concerned? Would you wear like maybe just a shield?
No, because it's so much more comfortable. I have them in my office. I have plexiglass, I have them off my conference room table. So because it's the, it's the, it's a lot of transmission, right? You spit when you talk, whether you realize it or not, some spit on others, right?
I spit a lot, so I...
Jerry knows.
I wasn't in college. But I would be stupid if you can just get...
Yeah, yeah, they can.
So that's why especially, especially in the tall notes, so that when you're standing close, that would really give you an extra...
Put it here, I'm talking here.
It's comfortable to wear a mask in case close, but that's not uncomfortable.
But that's not our decision either.
That's right. Yeah. You're going to talk to the... Correct, correct.
It's also not expensive, so they're very inexpensive. And they can use it in every meeting, township meeting, board, everything.
If you sit in your cubicle, you have to...
Okay, anyway, that's where we're at.
If they make them opaque, maybe they will get along.
If people have any other suggestions in that regard, pass them to Loretta or myself, it certainly will get considered. We all want to be safe and healthy, no question about it. The virus is clearly getting worse. Conceivably within days, they'll be approved for those of us who had two shots to get a third. But, you know, none of us, you know, a year and a half ago, none of us expected this to drag out for a year and a half, let alone more.
Goggles would help to... If it's not, if it's in, you know, how was that? Is there goggles and masks that we could get? If they could have goggles, everything...
Okay, does anybody have anything else? If not, is there...
Someone's aware of that.
So we heard that vaping discussion, right? This is a question related to dissolving work.
Should we go off the record here?
We'll go and modify the ordinances to say...
They're on the record here now. Well, that, let's hear what the applicant has to say. Well, the vaping, that's a totally different can of worms that we can certainly include it in our report for the township committee to consider it. It was interesting at the last meeting or two where they had a debate whether or not to have ordinance about cannabis. And they unanimously voted no, not because everybody was against cannabis, most were, but because of the way the state has set it up. The state has said, we'll adopt some rules later on. In the meantime, if you say you want it, then that means you're committed to having to have it regardless of the way the rules end up. If you say no now, then you can change your mind later.
Excuse me, I think that we need to go off.
I agree.
Fine, okay. Motion to adjourn.
No, it's five minutes.
Second.
No, it's five minutes.
Okay, all in favor? Anybody opposed? You can stay the night, but we're done.